One.
Evening. Today is June 25th. This is a special meeting of the North Hampton City Council. I am Gina Louise Sharra, and I will be presiding this evening. This meeting and all who are participating on it will be audio and video recorded. And thank you to North Hampton Open Media as always for providing that, for providing access to everyone and for providing the recording of this video on their government video archive channel. So people are coming in. Um, and we will start. So the purpose of this meeting is to comply with the instructions for the public. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call. Laura, could you do a roll first and then?
Counselor Dwight.
Here.
Counselor Foster.
Here.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor Labarge.
Here.
Counselor Maori.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
There you go.
Counselor Nash.
I am here.
He's coming.
Counselor Quinlan.
Here.
Counselor Sharra.
Here.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. So the purpose of this meeting is to comply with the instructions for a public body that is in receipt of an open meeting law complaint. Instructions state that we must meet to review the complaint within 14 days of receiving it and must respond to the complainant and copy the Attorney General also within those 14 days. There are two complaints that were filed which are on the agenda for review and response this evening. One from Friday, June 19th at 4:15 PM. I received it as the council president. It was also received by the city clerk. That complaint is by Joshua Wallace for the, representing the New England Police Benevolent Association Local 186. And the second one was received only by me as far as I know as the council president on Sunday at 9:40 PM. That was from Brian Letts Eisen for the New England Police Benevolent Association Local 187. The city solicitor, Ellen Seawall, is joining us. Um, and we will proceed. Can't hear. We can't hear you, Ellen. You're not muted, though.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, I guess my headphones aren't working. So, thank you, Council President. As the president said, the goal here is to figure out a way to respond to this complaint within 14 business days, which will end on July 9th for both complaints because they were received on a weekend. And so the first day is the first weekday after, or business day after. So that's, that's the goal here, is to formulate a response. Now, there are different methods to formulate a response and to determine what this response should be. Counselors could opt to have an independent investigation done by someone independent of the city. I would not perform that investigation. I would not be involved in the investigation. And, or you can self-disclose. I mean, those are options. And, you know, if a self-disclosure is made and a determination is made that there was a violation, well, then you go on to deal with what the remedy is going to be. You know, right up to the point of revoting the, the, the order for the general fund budget and going through the entire process again. If there is self-disclosure and there is no violation, then that's the response and we're done. And I can work with the council president or with whoever the council designates to formulate the response and send it. But that's what needs to happen here. There is some open, there is an open question with regard to how extra, how communications outside of the meeting are handled in the, in the virtual meeting age that we're in. And the Division of Open Government at the Attorney General's Office with which I consulted has not taken a position yet on whether two counselors speaking at intermission is violation. Normally, we always think about a quorum. But they were, the Assistant Attorney General I spoke with was not willing to commit to a, to a position because they haven't taken a position. And this may be the case in which they take a position on that. And they don't want to have prejudged or given advice that is inconsistent with what ultimately is decided on the facts of this case. So that's where we are. And so it was really up to the, the council to decide how it wants to proceed, keeping in mind that the goal here is within 14 business days to get a response out to the complainants. I haven't gone through the complaints. I did go through the complaints a little bit in the email that I know was shared with all of you. And, but if somebody needs, you know, some information about what's in the complaint, I'm happy to address that.
Counselor Dwight.
Thank you, Solicitor Seawall.
Can others hear me?
Can you hear me, Ellen? Ellen, your earbuds are out, so you can't hear anything, so.
Ellen, can you not hear? Uh-oh.
No, I'm not hearing.
Okay. We can hear you. You can't hear me telling you that, though.
No, it was me. It was, it was.
You can hear okay?
My computer's in the shop, so I'm using somebody else's computer to do this, so it's, it's been a great, great week.
Okay.
So you can hear, but you can hear now.
I can hear now.
Okay.
So, Ellen, the, I understand that the rules have changed substantially to, in response to COVID, for remote participation in meetings. And of course, open meeting law, by the way, I should state that this council and this city has been assiduous about adhering to not only the spirit, I mean, not only the letter of the law, but the spirit of the law. But in this instance, it seems to me if, if we weren't in remote participation and we went into recess, a counselor walking outside for, say, a cigarette or to the bathroom or something, is not, is, in my view, is not precluded or disallowed from having a conversation with another counselor. Now, I say this because, one, in the first part, I don't think what they're alleging actually even has occurred. I don't believe that we'll find out. But even if it did, what, what is being alleged in both complaints, it doesn't seem to me actually is a de facto violation, not only because of quorum issues, but also because of standing rules that allow counselors to communicate, not serially, not collectively in a quorum, but individually on an issue that's being deliberated is, wouldn't be a violation. Am I incorrect on this?
You're, you're correct, but that, you know, those kind of casual conversations are different than a concerted effort to secretly communicate behind the scenes in the middle of a meeting. And I'm not saying it's a violation, but that's the allegation. You're, you're in a world of circumstantial evidence, and this is how circumstantial evidence works. You know, people string together a series of events and assume that they're related to each other. And my Siri just decided to answer the question, and I'm really sure how to.
That would be a violation.
So, so, you know, we're in a different world. Is it more like three counselors at, at recess deciding to go into a separate room and have a conversation? Well, at least people know that that's happening. Here, the conversations are behind the scenes and no one knows that they're happening. I'm not saying that they're violations. I would take the position that it's not a violation. But I'm just telling you that the Division of Open Government has not decided what position they're going to take on this COVID-19 open meeting law reorganization that we're operating under. So that's all I'm saying. I do believe in, in the quorum requirement. But, you know, if we're going to, and so I'll leave it at that. I don't know what the Division of Open Government will do, but it certainly will be my position that a conversation between two counselors at, at a recess is not a violation of the open meeting law. That would certainly be my position.
A follow-up question. Would it be an appropriate process if we, in the, in the context of this meeting, determined positively or negatively whether the alleged violation occurred? If we determine that it hasn't, is that adequate? Is that even, that's the evidence?
What happens is that I, you know, I or someone on your behalf will relay to the complainants that, you know, based on what was determined at this meeting, no violation has occurred and there'll be no remedial action. That's the answer. Or we can do this in a different way. We can have, you know, a more formal investigation done. And, you know, and you'll, you'll be contacted by the investigator who will be asking you questions and perhaps asking you for documents. There's nothing that this council can do to force you to produce documents or to speak to anyone. So, but that's totally up to you.
Okay, so I was just, I was just wondering if we could expedite this and end this in this meeting? If that's a possibility, and it is. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Maori, I see your hand.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, to clarify with Ellen, I mean, what, what the counselors have had to go on is the statute, and the statute is very clear on this. So I, I guess, I guess that's what I wanted to say. The statute is not unclear. The statute, you need serial or quorum, you know, or to be breaking open meeting law. So that's what we have to go on without another, what you're saying is there's no other ruling about that.
That's right.
Okay, I just want to clarify that. And I, this is just, I'm not saying I want to do this. I'm just trying to understand, is this a situation where we would go into executive session?
No.
Even though it has to do with some, you know, I guess accusations against some of the counselors or, no?
There's nothing in the, in the open meeting law that allows, you know, an executive session because somebody's making an allegation.
But isn't that one of the stipulations for an executive session?
That someone's making an allegation? People make allegations all the time. Right now, we have an open meeting law violation, and I think it would be very odd to go into secret meetings.
I'm not, I'm not proposing it. I'm just trying to understand.
No, I'm not. I don't.
And it wouldn't be secret. Executive sessions are made public, so.
At some point, they are made public.
Yeah, so that's not secret. Thank you.
But it is, but it is a secret meeting. I mean, it is a, a meeting where the public's excluded. And I don't believe it is appropriate at this point.
Okay. I'm not proposing it. I'm trying to understand.
And so I would also point out, Counselor Maori, I do understand the conundrum for public officials such as yourselves, but we're not operating under the, under the statute completely. You understand that we would be doing what we're doing right now if we were operating under the statute. So there are, we're, we're operating under an order from the governor that alters the statute. And now the question is, in this altered environment, what are the rules? I agree that I will take the position that a quorum is necessary in order to violate the open meeting law. All I'm telling you is that the Assistant Attorney General with whom I spoke in the Division of Open Government would not commit to that position. That's all I'm telling you. And I can tell you no more than that. And she said she will be looking carefully at our decision because it is what we call a case of first impression for them, meaning they haven't ruled on it before.
Okay, I've got Counsel Labarge and then Counselor Jarrett.
Thank you, Council President Gina Louise Sharra. I just want to talk for myself here tonight that I am requesting, as a city counselor, Mary Ann Labarge, to put on record that I did not speak to any counselor while I was on my break during the June 18th, 2020 city council meeting. You have received a letter from me on the open meeting law complaint filed, a letter from my brother, George Pappas, from Snellsville, Georgia, and from Ruth McGrath. These letters verify the fact that during the June 18th, 2020 city council meeting, during my break time, I only spoke to my brother on the phone. And my brother had called and made three calls, three calls. I didn't answer two because we were in session. On break time, my brother called again and I talked with my brother that I was on a break for five minutes and he was concerned because he had received information from one of my family members that with that protest that went on Wednesday night, my husband had gone outside on Thursday morning to get the Gazette, and there was a very large sign placed on the hood of my car. It was a shower curtain, it appeared to be like clothwise, on the top of, of the top of my car to the ground. So that is why my brother kept calling me to see if everybody was not in harm's way. So that is what I have to say. As a city counselor, I did not speak to any counselor during my break time. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Jarrett.
Thank you. I just wanted to, I, I was perusing the state's frequently asked questions about open meeting law. And there's one, "May members of public bodies who are physically present, so different than this, at a meeting use electronic messaging such as text messaging or email to communicate with other public body members during that meeting?" And from that answer, "Electronic messaging during a meeting by less than a quorum of the public body's members, while not directly prohibited by the open meeting law, is discouraged if those electronic communications are not shared at the meeting with the members of the public who are present." So this doesn't address the question of messaging during a recess of a virtual meeting, but since during a physical meeting, it is only discouraged, not prohibited, and, and during a meeting would be a higher standard. It does suggest that it would be discouraged and not prohibited, but of course, that's just one interpretation. I hope that we at some point get guidance from the Division of Open Government.
We're, we're in a brave new world, Counselor. I, I'm not sure what analogy is most apt. I just don't know.
Yeah.
You know, the, the Assistant Attorney General said that it is, she believes that it's inappropriate at a virtual meeting for counselors to be texting with each other. And she also believes that it's inappropriate to be using the chat feature on, on Zoom with each other privately. You know, there are just different rules in the virtual world because no one knows what you're doing. You can set it up so no one can see what you're doing. And, you know, at least in, you know, in a, in a, in an in-person meeting, people can see what you're doing. I'm not sure it makes a difference. I, I don't know. I, as I said, I will take the position that a quorum is necessary, that the old rules apply here. All I'm telling you is that I don't know that that's correct. And I don't know that that's the way the Division of Open Government will come down.
I'll just say that I, I always try to limit, I, I change the chat settings so that people can only chat to me. And, and then actually after public comment, I try and turn it off entirely because I just use it during public comments so that people are having trouble figuring out how to raise their hand or having other difficulties that they can alert me to that. But I've always tried to make sure the council couldn't chat with, with each other or anybody else. Counselor Dwight.
Okay, so we've just heard Counsel Labarge, who was the focus of one of the allegations refute, rather vehemently, the allegation. So that's one. The allegation alleges that she was persuaded during the course of the recess to change her vote. And, and clearly, that phone call did not figure into her decision, nor was it a phone call or communication from any counselor. The, what they alleged is that Counsel Jarrett, of course, was madly working the phones and twisting arms. And, and if we can clear that up, I, I think we've done our due diligence.
Well, that, that would be with regard to Mr. Wall, Officer Wallace's complaint. The other complaint is broader.
To, how so?
The other complaint alleges that some or all of the counselors were, were in discussions.
Were in discussions about that vote?
Yes. Some, if not, some of, if not all of the councils participated in communication with each other or were aware that other counselors participated in communications with each other.
Well, should it come to it, and I, first, I'd like to clear up the first one, but would, if we ask for a vote of counselors who did communicate with each other relative to deliberation of that vote, and there is a show of hands that indicates that, that did not occur, is that adequate?
If, if there are fewer than a quorum, hands go up. I, I believe that that would be adequate.
Thank you.
Because I will, as I said, take the position that a quorum is necessary. Now, of course, we're going to have to know who communicated with whom because, well, no, if we don't have, we don't get to five, then, then it's.
We don't, no, no, i- if we don't get to five, then there's clearly a violation that's worthy of investigation. I, I agree. I concur. But if, if not, if we get to five, and I'm pretty confident we will, and then I, I just hope that that vote reflects our, the extent of our investigation. We, we, we are not an investigative body. We have, we have no judicial authority, as we're told over and over and over again. So to the extent that we are capable of investigating, which is to rely on the honest responses from the counselors, I think that's, that's game, set, match.
Now, I will say obviously that the Attorney General has great investigatory powers. The Attorney General has powers to, you know, force you to testify and to press documents. I will say that the Division of Open Government does not usually engage in subpoenas and forced testimony, that sort of thing. They do take people that they were. But if there's something amiss, the, you know, Attorney General's office can file a civil lawsuit. They could, you know, there are plenty of remedies to get your, all of your phone records. And may I, as an aside, remind you that earlier this, this year, I believe it was, I explained why you shouldn't use your private email for public business. And we are, you know, it's just an example for those of you who use private emails, that you could have, you know, a court ordering the Attorney General to rummage through your email. And so this is just an example, as an aside. So that could happen, but it's not going to happen in this form.
Right, right.
We don't, we don't have that authority. No. You don't have authority to exclude anybody from voting. You don't have the authority to impose civil fines. The Attorney General certainly does have all of that, but you don't. And so this is taken at its word, at your word, and, and, you know, proceed from there.
I saw Counselor Thorpe, and then I saw Counselor Labarge.
Thank you. So Attorneys Seawald and all the counselors, just want to let you know that I didn't have any conversation with anyone during deliberation. And I can tell you that I stand by my no vote that was taken earlier and the fact that I voted to approve the whole budget, to not reverse that decision. And I didn't think it would reverse that decision I made. I saw it as there's a part of the budget I didn't agree with, but I'm still going to approve the whole budget in its entirety. I still believe that there is a plan that is needed and a measured approach to this. And I still believe that, you know, whether it's a select committee or a, a commission to look at the things that really need to get done to do the things that the community is asking us to do. So even before the meeting commenced, I planned to do exactly as I did. And there should be no consideration as my no vote was being reversed. So, thank you.
Okay, I saw Counselor Labarge before.
Ellen, the three letters that you received, Counselor President Gina Louise Sharra, and I think also it was sent to the union. Where does that go from here?
Right now, it's in the record of this meeting, and hopefully will never be needed again.
Thank you.
Counselor Jarrett.
Thank you. So, right, the complaint was brought because, you know, I withdrew reconsideration after the recess. Counselor Labarge was noted answering the phone call, and Counselors Labarge and Thorpe voted to adopt the budget, although they had not voted for the amendment. And with the, you know, with Counselor Labarge and Thorpe clearly communicating that they did not communicate with another counselor, clearly stating, does that settle the matter in terms of, that clearly was not the, you know, I didn't have any communication with them because, in, in affecting my decision to withdraw the reconsideration.
Well, the allegations in one of the complaints is that some or all of the counselors had communications among the counselors, and so that's the allegation. And it's, I, I don't think that just simply saying that you didn't talk to the people whose votes changed resolves the matter. The question is, were there communications either as a group, which didn't seem like there was very much time to put together a group phone call, or serial conversations, or some, some coordination among counselors? And that's, you know, that's the question. And, and again, simply because there may have been conversations doesn't mean that there was a violation. But we won't know whether there's a violation until we know what conversations happened. And that's either going to happen by self-disclosure or that's going to have to happen with an investigation. But in my view, it's not enough just to say that I didn't speak to Counselors Thorpe or to Counselor Labarge.
Counselor Maori.
Seems like we're in the position to at least eliminate and review, have a result of the.
Counselor Maori, we're having trouble hearing.
Let me take this off. Everyone's having issues with that. Let me just apologize. Turn this air conditioner off because I can't hear you. Excuse me. Thank you for your patience. I had to turn the air conditioner off sadly so I could make sure I could hear you. I'm just trying to kind of make this less overwhelming. It seems to me it's clear that we don't even have the premise of violating at least one of these, you know, claims and one of these complaints. So if we could eliminate one complaint in terms of covering it, we could concentrate on the others. I think it would feel less overwhelming to me, based on what Counselor Labarge has told us. Does that make sense?
Sure. I think that we probably have resolved the, the Wallace complaint.
Okay. It'd be easier for me to kind of focus if I could take one if we know. So, great, thank you.
Given that the allegations are very specific about two specific counselors.
Yeah.
And Counsel Labarge has said that no counselor has contacted.
Right. So I think we've covered that one. So that was the Wallace, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Dwight, did I see your hand?
Yeah. So, so we move on to the second one, which is, as Solicitor says, is a broader one. So essentially, the allegation is that we were deliberating on the side between counselors and by electronic communication, and that persuasion was applied and influenced the vote. And I will say right now, I did not deliberate in any way electronically other than what was seen on, in the course of the meeting. I did not transmit anything relative to. I did not transmit anything relative to the order that was being discussed. So in, in, in that regard, I, I, I just, I don't think, actually, to be honest, I'm receiving texts from people all over the place during the course of a meeting. Family members, people who are, people, outside people trying to apply persuasion, but, but I am not communicating with other counselors in, in, or deliberating with them, particularly during that vote. There is not, I mean, I, I will say that I have communicated with counselors at times during a meeting that had nothing to do with what we were deliberating. So, so there, I, I think if that counts towards the second allegation from, from Local 187.
So Counselor, you're, you're saying that you had no communications with other counselors during the recess?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. I had texted the Council President to say that Mary Ann LaBarge's mic was open. So to indicate that she might want to unmute her because she was having what looked like a personal phone call, and it turned out it was. And I thought that while we want to abide by the letter of the open meeting law, that would not qualify, and it wouldn't be appropriate.
Appreciate it. I'll put you down as no.
That's a no, yes.
So since I was the one who received that communication from Counselor Dwight, I'll, I will agree that I had gone to the bathroom when I came back. Actually, before I saw his text, I heard that Counselor LaBarge was, was having a conversation during, so I muted her. And then I saw that Counselor Dwight had actually alerted me to the fact that she had left her mic unmuted during recess. And that's it. That was the extent of my communication. Oh, Counselor Nash, hold on. Can you not unmute? Hold on. Did that work?
Oh. So, um, you know, I, I had no deliberations, communications with other counselors during that very critical and difficult. And I would say, you know, really, it, it was an awful vote. I mean, I, I appreciate where we landed, but I sincerely, I, my colleagues, all of you, I, I sensed that all of us were sweating the details of making that very difficult decision. And I don't hold anybody's votes against them. And I don't think that anybody was persuaded by anything outside of that meeting. And that, and that I wasn't involved in anything like that. But, but I, I just, from the energy in that virtual room, I, I don't sense any of that going on. And, and I sensed we were all there making a very difficult decision. So, thank you.
Counselor Jarrett.
Thank you. I just want to, so we have now ascertained that a quorum of counselors did not communicate. So, and so I would, I also want to say that I see this as an attempt to intimidate or just a lack of understanding of the open meeting law. I mean, I think no reasonable person would suspect that a quorum, which is five of counselors, communicated with each other in that 13 minutes. So the question is, you know, we've, we've, we've essentially ascertained that, that, that the quorum did not happen. Do we want to continue and each of us, you know, give our statement for remaining? Or do we want to just end because we've, we've done our duty?
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes. I felt that I had my right to do a statement of I was not guilty of talking to anybody. Never have, as long as I've been a counselor, of any kind of debates going on. And my right here is my right. So I did what I had to do to prove who I was talking to. So I am very comfortable of having those letters that have been submitted in of who I was talking to. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Counselor Dwight, did I see your hand?
Yes, sorry. If, if anyone's uncomfortable going beyond this and is relative to communication, then yes, I think we've met a letter of, of at least the statute as it stands. And, and in fact, I don't think, even if two counselors, if there were two counselors who were communicating during the course of it that relative to the deliberation, I don't think that's a violation either. It's not different if they were sitting next to each other, mumbling to each other and stuff. But, and, and I'm satisfied the way it stands now. But if everyone else would feel more comfortable in that we went around the room, the virtual room amid our declarations, if they would prefer that, I mean, that would certainly put an end to it. But at the same time, I, I think we've meet, we've met the conditions as, as they have been alleged, and we have successfully challenged them and refuted them.
I agree with you. Counselor Quinlan.
Well, in the spirit of that, I would just tell you that, that during that recess, I had communication with no one at all. I had, you know, basically just filled my water glass and sat back down. Thank you.
Counselor Foster.
Thank you. And, and I recognize that I do believe we've met the spirit, but also would like to take the opportunity to say that I didn't have any communication during that recess as well. I refilled my water bottle, like Counselor Quinlan checked on my kids, and came back to the meeting. I wasn't communicating or deliberating with any other counselor.
Counselor Mayory.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, I just wanted to echo that I do feel this, the complaints are directly impacted by the reference vote. They're not happy about the outcome of the vote, and so they want the vote undone. And while it is counsel's job to give this review of the complaints due diligence, I feel we need to adjust our airtime and oxygen that we give to this accordingly. It's clear we've, we've already established, based on the statutes, that there was no quorum. There was no, no open meeting law, and I move, I move to adjourn.
I'm sorry, we can't adjourn yet. We still have to figure out how we're going to proceed, which we must do. Um, I saw Counselor Dwight.
Yes, and depending what the final outcome is here, Alan, can we charge you with writing the response? So we don't, we tease or cross, eyes are dotted, asses are covered.
I would be happy to take that charge. I would work with the Council President or with whomever else you, as a counsel, would like me to do that, but that's totally up to you. The, the statute specifically allows you to assign the response to one of the members, your, your agent or your counsel.
Okay, thank you. Counselor President, if I can follow up a bit, that would be my, that would be my request, actually, if I could say that to you, that I would like a, a letter drafted by the solicitor reflecting the, the conclusions that we came to in the course of this conversation. And we feel that they've adequately responded to both complaints and find them lacking.
It would also be my preference to, and I'm happy to work with the solicitor to do that, but to have that letter drafted by the city. Or the letter drafted.
Does this require a vote? And I know it's.
No.
Motion second and vote.
Okay, I, I, I move that, that, my statement before I move is a motion, it make a motion to have the solicitor draft up a letter reporting the conclusions that we have come to, and we find both complaints lacking.
Second.
Second up.
Okay, motion's been made by Counsel Dwight, seconded by Counsel Foster. Discussion on this motion. Seeing none. Roll call. Laura, please.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay. Um, great, thank you, thank you.
We don't get to go till another four hours?
You guys want to hang out? We will not be recessing, though. So, it was a joke too soon.
I move to adjourn.
Oh, wait, Counsel LaBarge, your hand was raised. Is there a reason?
Yes. Are there people waiting to talk? I can see a list of people here.
People are here in this meeting because it's a public meeting, but there's, this was the only purpose for this meeting.
So they can't speak.
There's no public comment.
There's no public comment?
So, my, my motion to adjourn is repeated.
I get it. Okay, I think we're, we're set. So roll call is on adjourning.
Counselor Foster.
Yep.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Mayory.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Okay.
See you all in a week and a half.